It's Star Wars today, so may the force be with you. And let's start our meeting. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Martin Lewis.
In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Our Father,
Lord in heaven, Father, be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And may it not be temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of the diversity and justice of God.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marquardt.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one, public comment. At this time, I'll remind you to put your phones on vibrate. Remember, there's no going back and forth. It is just for us to listen to your comments. And comments can only be on an agenda item. Madam Clerk?
Jenny Minville to discuss Agenda Item number 5A.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jenny Minville. I'm the Director of Advancement at Catholic High School. I am here to talk to you about Agenda Item 5A on the one-way for De La Salle Drive. As most of you know, De La Salle Drive goes right in front of Catholic High School. It has been a severe problem to our school because that two-way street has caused some major traffic issues in front of Catholic High. As you can imagine, we have 630, 640 students at Catholic High School, and there is a lot of moving in car line down De La Salle Street. Our primary goal is safety. Our secondary goal is actually moving people. So, the narrow lanes and the curve that come from Center Street all the way to Admiral Doyle provides, it makes a problem because of people lining up down that street. If we would make that a one-way from Center Street all the way to Admiral Doyle, we would reduce some major accidents. There was a big accident that happened just two weeks ago at school when a person was basically pulled over on the side of the road. It's a very deep ditch, right lining our softball field and kind of on the side. They were sitting there, kind of just waiting. They tried to merge on when it was time for car line to stop. They were slammed to the side. The other one ended up on the other side of the street. The jaws of life, they had to come and extract the lady out of the car. We've had some near, very close misses to head-on collisions. It's a huge problem. We feel like with the help of the New Iberia City Police and things that we can get this instead of a two-lane to a one-way street. So, that is really a huge part of it. There has been studies that have shown that in other cities where these things have happened and it's been converted to a one-way, that accidents have been severely reduced. So, we ask that you please look into this just for the safety of our students and the safety of our parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany Vietor to discuss Agenda Item number 5A.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brittany Vietor. I'm a parent at Catholic High. I have three students there, one of which she was gonna start driving in a few years. I sit in Catholic High's car line every afternoon and I drive through it every morning. And the proposal to turn De La Salle into a one-way, I feel like would greatly benefit everyone involved in the morning and in the afternoon. The afternoon is a lot of cars on the side of the road and general people trying to use De La Salle are essentially playing chicken over and over and over to see who's gonna get to have to go in somebody's yard so they can pass. Sometimes they're passing us so quickly. I drive an Expedition XL, which is basically a bus. And these people are passing so fast that they shake my car. I don't know where they trying to go, but I just feel like that would be not even an issue if they would turn it into a one-way. And also, in the mornings, the students are trying to come in from Admiral Doyle or having to pull over on the side of Admiral Doyle trying to get into the parking lot their way. So, those students are in danger of getting sideswiped by somebody on Admiral Doyle, which I think would be fixed by making it a one-way. So, we just want to ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Elmer to discuss Agenda Item number 5A.
First, I want to thank y'all for hearing our grievance. And adding on what she just said, the issue comes when you have people coming in off Admiral Doyle expecting to get to Center Street. You have people trying to pass up our line and they meet up head-on. Now, you have people trying to pass us up that are going in 50 miles an hour plus, trying to hurry up and pass everybody to get back into the proper lane. When they meet on somebody, like I said, you feel your car shake. If everybody goes one-way, that would eliminate that problem. Because if you go straight down Center Street, you got the intersection of Admiral Doyle and Center. That just cuts off that little bit of a block. So, any inconvenience would be taken up at that red light. And the neighborhood across from Catholic High has an exit on Admiral Doyle, right by McDonald's and that, I think it's a glass place that repairs glass. And the other way, if they come out on De La Salle, they can take a left and make it to Admiral Doyle. So, everybody would win as far as safety. And what few minor inconveniences of people wouldn't be outweighed by how much safety would be for everybody concerned. Because no matter what's happening, you're not stopping the people from coming from Center. And even turning, if you're familiar with De La Salle, the first turn is a little short one. They'll get in that lane right there and make that curve on speed with people coming head-on to them. There's been many cases where if somebody just about had to get in a ditch and a lot of them don't slow down, they play, like she said, play chicken. They'll pass each other 35 miles an hour in a lane and a half and some of them in the grass. So, if y'all can see it your way, I think it would be a lot saving. It's gonna save a much severe wreck in the future. So, thank y'all very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Warren Goschess for Agenda Item numbers 5A and 6A.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I know I'm gonna be talking on two agenda items. I want to first thank the guests who've talked before me. I've gotten the phone calls over the several, couple days since the accident took place. I do fully agree with them. De La Salle is a risk and we need to address it. Mr. Chairman, Chairman, I'm thinking I'm at the parish council. Mr. Mayor?
You are the chairman.
Well, I want to just say this. And I don't want to call out a single person, but there's somebody that left me and he's glowing now that he's here. So, I'm pretty sure we can figure it out. Anyways, Lewis Street is very important to me. You guys bringing this up, I want to just say the leadership here is top-notch. You guys are doing a great job. You're making a difference in the community. Just the conversation that's been had between the mayor, parish president, council members, parish and city. It's a privilege to serve this community at this capacity. Lewis Street, I thought it was gonna be a gravel road by the time we got to this. It's a hazard. I just want to say I've had the conversations with the mayor, Pro Tem, the mayor. This is the busiest street in the parish, if you will. That intersection there is continuing to grow and it's growing because good leadership sees the future there, sees how we can bring us together and continue to grow. So, I'm asking you tonight, please unanimously, Mr. Broussard, that's our area together. Let's make it work. Let's continue the growth and let's give the people something they can be proud of to get to that red light. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it? But we had some more. Great. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to Agenda Item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of April 20th, 2021, which will publish on Wednesday, May 5th, 2021.
Do we have a motion? Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilman Lewis. Do we have any discussion about our minutes? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk? Item 3A.
Dean and Catherine Watney to address the council about Iberia Mental Health Initiative.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tem, council. We formed our organization about five years ago and we, our initiative, and we've kind of been here to where I think y'all are beginning to see. There's Dean and Catherine Watney. It must be May and Mental Health Awareness Month. So, it's May and Mental Health Awareness Month. And we're here to mention that to you. Our organization, one of the goals is to educate the public and to reduce the stigma. And so, we're here to make that announcement about Mental Health Month and accept the proclamation if you're so inclined. Our organization also would like to remind everybody that mental health is like physical health. We need to pay attention to it and we need to reduce our stress and treat ourselves kindly. And so, as we continue to try to inform the public and try to present programs, we've lately had, of course, to resort to our social media where we have many videos that I think are quite helpful in regards to mental awareness and mental health and particularly in coping with the COVID pandemic. Very good program by Dr. Spell, who talks about how to recognize and help and treat young children who recognize the symptoms of this COVID exposure, whole scenario, and how to help recognize those issues and how to help plan to treat those. And in connection with Mental Health Month, we have a little program that we're also working on.
Yes, another way we are advocating for mental health awareness is the first By You Side Run. It's a 5K run, one-mile walk, and it will be on May 22nd. We chose the name because it's only fitting. Everyone needs someone by their side to support them and advocate for them and their needs. And this is a joint venture between our Iberia Mental Health Initiative and Heart for Iberia, which is another nonprofit community organization that does a lot of good in the town. So, as I said, it's May 22nd downtown. The mayor and city administration as well as Parks and Recreation have been very supportive of what we're doing and we do appreciate that as well as some of the council members here tonight who are sponsors of this. We have about 30 sponsors. And to this day, we have about 165 people signed up for the run. So, like I said, we hope by doing this to raise awareness of good mental health and also to do some fundraising for future works of the initiative. And if you all would like more information, I have some black and white flyers like this on the side table and that will give you more information. And we do appreciate your continuing support of these efforts.
And our sponsors will be on the back of the T-shirts that we will give out to the runners. And the city of New Iberia will be there as well as Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. So, we thank y'all for y'all's support.
Great. I have a proclamation. May is Mental Health Month. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Whereas, all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic. And whereas, we all share the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. And whereas, we are called upon, we call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in New Iberia to commit our community to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Therefore, we proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month in the city of New Iberia. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right, Madam Clerk? Item 3B.
Joe LeBlanc to address the council and announce candidacy for New Iberia City Marshal.
First of all, I'd like to say a thanks to the mayor and his clerk, all the city, ladies and gentlemen on the council, as well as the residents behind me, as well as the young people behind me. I want to thank y'all for having me here tonight. And I want to let y'all know that after long conversation with my wife and my family, friends, and supporters, that I'm gonna run for the city marshal position. And I appreciate if y'all consider me. I don't have my cards yet. I was hoping they would be out for tonight, but I didn't make it. But on my qualifications, I have training in criminal and narcotic investigation. Been doing that for years with Mr. Rummo. I work undercover narcotic from here to North Carolina. I know people. I would be a good asset to you, city marshal, because when you serve a paper and you're not there, you have to find a way to go back and catch him. And that's what I was good at. But I want to thank y'all here tonight. And I want to help move this city forward. Because we have a good council now. We have a good city police. And with a good city marshal, then nothing holding us back. And I ask y'all, please again, consider Joe LeBlanc for your next city marshal. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Madam Clerk? Item 4A.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2021-10, approving the extension of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreements between the city of New Iberia and New Iberia Museum Foundation.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing? Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by, who was second? Councilwoman Reed. Is there any public comment on our public hearing? Hearing, oh. We have a participant.
Hi, I'm Marsha Patu with the Baywatch Museum. I just wanted to thank you all for considering this extension of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement that we've had with you for, well, almost 20 years now. And the fact that the mayor and Jeff consolidated the two buildings. We started the expansion on our wing now. And to consolidate those two Cooperative Endeavor Agreements into one is gonna make life a lot simpler for the museum paperwork-wise and hopefully for you all too. So, we thank you for your consideration of extending our agreement with you and look forward to seeing you all on next Wednesday, I hope, at the public unveiling for Kathleen Blanco's marker. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none? I need a motion to close. Close by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. I need a second. Second by Councilwoman Marquardt. Thank y'all very much. Now, we move on to resolutions. 5A.
Resolution 21-39. A resolution designating a portion of De La Salle Drive as a one-way roadway.
Do I have a motion? Move. I think it was Councilman Swier. And who was second? I wasn't sure. Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes?
Yeah, I'm actually surprised it's come now. It should have been a long time ago. I'm actually a graduate and alumni of Catholic High. So, I'm actually, I'm in favor of this. I think it needs to be done, seeing it for that many years. I have family and friends that still go there now. And I'm all for making it safer for them to get back and forth. So, thanks for y'all bringing this forward.
Councilwoman Reed?
So, I guess I'm kind of gonna be playing devil's advocate tonight.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of residents that live there. I actually use that road all the time. And I can appreciate what the kids are going through and the parents because they're lining up. I see the same thing at Passon because they line up in front of my house, St. Edwards. But the issue for the residents is that it's really gonna inconvenience them every time they leave their house. Because now they have to go around and turning on that, I actually, after I talked to you, I went and I rode.
Gerard Street.
Yeah, I went and I drove down that street to see how easy it would be for the residents who live there to get in and out. And it's actually gonna cause a hazard for them because where they're gonna turn is very close to Center Street, where all that traffic is and people turning into McDonald's and coming across. And I just think we need to think about the residents in that area. And maybe our solution not is not to turn it into a one-way, but to use the police to control the traffic the way they used to do, where it would turn one-way in the morning, one-way in the afternoon, or whatever. I don't know that that's the solution. I'm just saying, from the resident's perspective, and I just, and you know, I'm just trying to present the other side, that will inconvenience them, inconvenience them every time they have to leave home. And it's not gonna necessarily make it easy for them to turn when they leave on that side street. And again, I use that street as well, so I get it. I understand that, you know, what they're talking about. It's just I feel like we need to think about the fact that the residents are in that area and we're gonna make a change to them.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
So, I think what we heard, no offense, Ms. DeeDee, but you say the term inconvenience. So, if the inconvenience causes a loss of life because of the accident, then it's really not an inconvenience. So, far too often, government has the chance to solve a problem, at no cost to the taxpayer. And by solving a problem, by reverting to one lane temporarily, if it doesn't work later, we can revert it. But to solve the issue that's being presented from a safety standpoint is a win-win for the city and the council. I counted, I went there, my kids went there, there's four houses. Four houses that face one, that apartment goes to the back, four houses. So, I think the inconvenience shouldn't even be considered when we look at a safety aspect. And knowing that the police officers did in the past control the traffic there, but now we can't supply that service any longer, it's something that this government has to proceed to do to try to alleviate the problems that we have there. And I think this is the solution that'll work the best way we can see fit. But I think, you know, from an inconvenience standpoint, I think once it's more palatable and people get used to the situation, I think it'll flow very easy.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, why don't you let me go around and then I'll come back? That way, you know, everybody gets a chance and we'll just keep going around as long as we have to. You done, Ricky? Mr. Broussard?
De La Salle Drive, because of the increased traffic during school hours and because of high number of young students and others who drive there, safety and accidents have become an issue. Designating De La Salle Drive as a one-way street from Center Street to Admiral Doyle should improve the flow of traffic at the intersection at the same time reduce the risk for accidents. There are many young students who drive through that intersection. This plan should provide for improved traffic flow and for greater safety for Catholic High students and others who drive on Admiral Doyle. We've been in office 12 to 15 years serving up here. That has been a big, big, big thorn in our side of trying to fix a remedy. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. I hope it goes as is because you have a one-way from Center Street to Admiral Doyle. The ones that are picking up kids, stay in the right lane. Leave that left lane one-way to go. You can pass and go. You know, but you have a long line now that you can stay in line. There are people waiting on Admiral Doyle, in front of McDonald's, in front of the tire place, and the guys on Gerard Street coming out, they can't go because they have a line that's cutting through, turning right to go into Catholic High on De La Salle. Should I eliminate them parking there to, and the neighbors we talking about? Their bunch called me up. How can we rectify getting those cars off of Admiral Doyle parked on the side? Taking up a lane sometime. They can't see around when they're coming out. So, we trying to fix it where nobody parks on Admiral Doyle in front of McDonald's or the tire place. They can't turn up one-way now. You know, they have to go around, get in line like the rest, and pick up your kids. So, that's much. I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, you putting this on the agenda. We've been fighting this for 12 to 15 years. We're looking at putting, if we can, pipe in the ditch on the side. Make another lane if we could, but it's expensive. We talked about that before. So, we have to fill up that ditch one day some kind of way. But I do appreciate y'all putting this on the agenda. It's been a big thorn in all our sides of how to fix that along Catholic High.
Thank you. Anybody else for, I'll go back and circle around?
I didn't get a chance to go look at it, but I'm just, I never, that's the street right on the side of Catholic High?
Yes, sir.
If you're going to, if you're going to Lewis Street, say like from west end, it's the right, it's on the right, you turn right on the side Catholic High? And you're taking and it go all the way to 14?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that was Catholic High Street.
In a big curve. That's pretty funny.
I did.
It was a driveway.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Then, Councilwoman Reed, I'll go back to you.
Okay, so, I'm definitely not saying that we shouldn't help the school because I don't, I mean, I see the same problem in front of my house every day with the people lined up at Passon, people coming around. There's a stop sign there, they're taking up a lane. My issue is, have we tried to resolve this where the school does something different? Like, I don't know, pay for somebody to do this. All I'm saying is that now from every single day, every time somebody wants to use that, they gotta go all the way around. And we're talking about people like, I know I use that road all the time because I come from that end of town. And so, now I won't be able to use that road. I'm just saying that we have residents over there. We have other people that use that road for convenience. This is, we're talking about in the morning and in the afternoon, twice a day, and we're changing the whole thing. And I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at the safety for the kids, but I'm just saying maybe we should think about the residents and get their point of view before we make a final decision. That's all.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
Just to let you know, DeeDee, just when you eliminate the school out of it totally and people line up on Admiral Doyle to take a left on De La Salle and they're stopping traffic between two busy red lights, there's been several accidents without school involved there. So, we actually not just benefiting the school, but we improving the traffic flow on Admiral Doyle as well by not making them a left-hand turn onto De La Salle, I think. So, I think, you know, we're doing more benefit than harm in this case, in my opinion.
Okay.
Anybody else? I'll just give you a really, really quick, very brief history. The Sheriff's Department used to direct traffic there, okay? That's not something we can do. We have 135 calls for service a day. We have, we are, you know, solving crimes and making really good progress across our city. But that's not something we have time to do because our people are on patrol and hitting it. I'll just tell you. Now, you'll see that we do it at two schools. That's a different situation. That's an SRO. That's a school resource officer that's being paid every day their entire salary by that school. Not just to go part-time, they're in the school all day, they're there every day, and we pay nothing of their salary. So, two schools have that, but that's because they pay for it. We have a contract. So, that's a whole different animal. But when the Sheriff's Department used to do it, just, this was kind of weird. They made it a one-way street for different times of the day. So, we had the only street I ever heard of in my life that was half a day in the morning one-way, half a day in the afternoon one-way. It was weird, okay? I didn't get involved with it because it wasn't us. I would never have wanted to have a partial one-way street. I mean, that was kind of wacky. So, the truth of the matter is, the street has been one-way those years. So, it's something I just wanted to bring out that the total concept of one-way is not totally new because sometimes it was one-way. And I just wanted people to know when we said officers were there, it was not the police department. We had conversations, I'll be totally blunt. We had conversations when the police were coming back was, where are we gonna do that? And we basically had to say, no, we're contracted by the Sheriff's Department. And, you know, we would have to be, have a contract and be an SRO officer because if not, my officer would spend all day at every school. Not that it wouldn't be a great thing, but we just can't afford that. And I don't have enough officers. I'm always one or two short. We're about to send two more to the academy and that'll get our numbers back up. But we just don't have the manpower to say, we're gonna go and do that unless I hire someone full-time that the school pays their salary. So, I just kind of wanted to tell a little bit of a brief history and let people know that it wasn't our officers who used to do that. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
I guess that's what I was alluding to. The school paying for the SRO. I guess that's what I was alluding to, is the school paying for the SRO person that the city doesn't have to pay for, and we don't have to change the street. That's all.
I understand.
Okay.
I just like people to kind of know the history.
Okay.
Is there any other, uh, comments? Hearing none? Good discussion. I'll ask you to please vote your machines. Great, thank y'all very much. Madam Clerk, let's see, five B.
Resolution twenty-one dash forty, authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to the local road safety program. State project number H zero one three seven seven zero. LSRP signing and striping and authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents, contracts, and agreement in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter, I think?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? So, yes, sir.
So I think, you know, when you look at that government and the things that we do to serve people and then you look at what the economy drives in the city, and if you look at last month, eighteen percent increase in sales tax. Where was most of that sales tax being generated? In that hub by Rouse's, in that area there. So, we need to make sure that we take care of that base that's driving this economy. And to me, that role is essential in what we do for the economic engine of the city. I know, we're striping.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, striping. That's right.
Because we are striping some there, but this is all over town.
That's what I thought it was on. That's why I thought the striping was on that street too.
Probably a little bit, but it's all over town.
Okay, never mind it.
Okay, no, you were doing so good. I just wanted you to know.
No, but I was saying, you know.
I know, I know.
I thought you were talking about that part.
Yeah, cool. Any other discussion?
Is this gonna stripe all of the roads in the city?
No, sir, not all the roads. This will stripe the roads that they identified as being a risk or looked at trying. This wasn't something, I mean, it's a gift, we'll take it. It wasn't something we asked for. We asked DOTD for the Frontage Road about a hundred times and instead we keep getting other projects, okay? Frontage Road keeps getting put off. I'll take it when I get it. But we'll also take anything else we can get. But this project, they identified areas that we needed striping due to accidents. So they went through the whole town and the Mayor Pro Tim got lucky because Lewis Street is one of. But we have a little bit of striping going all over town and it's a decent project. We'll do some good for our community.
Is it gonna be state roads only or some city roads?
No, I think actually they just looked at data from recs. Is that right, Jane? I'm pretty sure. They just looked at rec data, so it was a little bit of everything. Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am.
So could you already, I'm sorry?
No, you go ahead.
You already have a list of the roads?
That was my question.
I have.
I was just learning about how many are they doing?
I couldn't, I had no input in that, uh, but I think it's about. Yeah, I saw a list that was about fifteen different locations. You know, and like you said, it's all driven by DOTD and all I did was say, yes, thank you. But it's about fifteen roads.
Okay.
And they looked at rec data to have those roads selected.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Well, great minds think alike. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Now we're gonna need a motion, if you don't mind. I try not to do that, but to expand the agenda. Okay, I have a motion to expand the agenda by Councilman Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Goncalo. And Madam Clerk, now tell us what we're considering.
Uh, this would be resolution number twenty-one dash forty-one. Authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to Frontage Road. State project number H zero zero nine eight nine two. FAP number H zero zero nine eight nine two. LDRR, US ninety FR, US ninety, Iberia Parish. And authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents, contracts, and agreements in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion to go ahead and expand on this item for this resolution? Motion, Councilman Reed and Councilwoman Morcott, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
I think you have to vote.
Well, you know what, first, yeah, my first vote should have been to expand the agenda. I'm sorry. So, scratch that. Our first vote, I need a motion only to expand the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Lewis. So this is just that you will vote to expand the agenda. Vote your machines, please. Thank you very much, because that has to be unanimous, so thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, I don't know if we need to read it again. Uh, now I need a motion for this resolution. Motion, Councilman Reed, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on our resolution now? And what this is, the Frontage Road is still a couple of years away, but this was a step that we sent in the old resolution, which was years old. And because it was so old, really says the same thing, they asked us to do a new resolution. And I expanded the agenda because while they might not think time is of the essence, I don't want to do anything, and they don't. I don't want to do anything that slows this up. So, any questions, comments? Then I would please ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item six A.
Special ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one dash oh six. Admitting the budget to account for total costs for repairs to Lewis Street from Admiral Doyle Drive to South City Limits and to set for public hearing on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilman Bruce Art. Do I have a second?
Second.
Whoa.
Give it to somebody else.
Councilwoman Morcott, thank you. Now, do we have any discussion on this item? Councilman Bruce Art?
She's gonna put the fifteen next to you. Uh, the Lewis Street resurfacing from Amadou to Nyarbury City Limits is in the final stage of planning and is expected to begin soon. Iberia Parish is also involved with Lewis Street Modernization Project. Lewis Street just south of Amadou is not only within the Nyarbury City Limits, it is also in Iberia Parish. The modernization of Lewis Street is a shared responsibility by the City of Nyarbury, Iberia Parish, and the Louisiana Department Highways. Resurfacing work performed on Lewis Street from Amadou to the Nyarbury City Limits would allow for a seamless, smooth transition and road alignment, in part which Iberia Parish would continue the modernization of Lewis Street towards the full-lane highway. Construction for the exchange of Lewis Street and the full-lane highway has been completed. With the completion of Lewis Street, a project long in the making, overall roads' safety will be enhanced. We should remember that Lewis Street is not only one of the main roads in Nyarbury. It is a main entrance to the Port of Iberia, so. Uh, it's been a long time coming on that too, Mr. Mayor. I've got many gripes, many concerns, uh, to fix these holes and fix the road. So it's in my district again, so I appreciate you putting this on. And we're sharing the costs, myself and Ricky and yourself, the mayor. Out of our hundred thousand, we're putting fifteen thousand each, so. The citizens know we're working as a team with the parish. Mr. Goncalo, say, we send your hands after we finish this portion. Y'all finish the rest. It's a big hand, it's a big thing to follow. Oh, look, but it's a long time coming. But, uh, make a good entrance to Nyarbury. Let's keep the thing rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Art. Anybody else have any comments? Yes?
I just think it's really great and thank you too for both putting up that money, you know, because my district money's kind of strapped right now. I'm glad that you guys are able to do that. And it's really gonna be nice for the city to finally be able to have a smooth surface right there, going to all those businesses. I think the businesses will appreciate it as well. So thank y'all. Good stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So I think, I think, um, yeah, I think now we're on the right topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Because we just talked about striping on the extension. I said, you know, he's striping that too as well. But, no, I think, you know, that part of the road is probably one of the biggest complaints that I've got when I was running about trying to fix that for businesses and residents. And if you think about it, everybody in the city probably passes on that road once a week. So I think, you know, everybody sees it and it kind of ploys itself into the things that we're gonna try to do in the future to the city and the road improvements coming now, that, you know, we are in here for the best of our community and we're all working as a team to fix the essential parts of our economic engine. So I think this is really gonna raise some feathers and create a buzz in that area and, uh, I think there's better things to come in the future.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lewis?
I just wanna comment on that word you, the modernization of Lewis Street.
That's it.
That's what I'm talking about. So we would add, so we would add far behind and.
It looks like we're in the country.
Okay.
Country gotta come to town.
I love it, maybe, that's good.
That's modernizing.
Alright, thank y'all. Anybody else have any comments? None? I just have one, uh. It's one block, I know, but it is an entrance to our city. It makes a difference. It sets a precedent. I was getting lunch at Chick-fil-A today and the owner, Austin, came out and said, hey, man, y'all gonna fix my road, I heard. You know, I mean, there is a lot, millions of dollars has been invested in that, in that corner and in that area, and it is our hottest one. I brought developers through two weeks ago. They're coming with a new store and they couldn't get on that corner and their request was how close can I get to that corner? Uh, you know, so it's a hot corner. I mean, it is, that whole end of town is really doing well. So, I think this is a good project, a good use of, uh, each of y'all's a portion of your money. The city's putting up the rest. It's about sixty-four thousand, so we're putting up thirty-four as a city out of our coffers, all of us, because it is all of us. It's our money, it's our project, and you two are putting up each fifteen of your hundred thousand. I think it's a win-win for all of us, so great teamwork. Yes, sir?
I guess the question is that corner, oh, seriousness, that corner was worn out because of the traffic that always been on that corner.
Yes, yes, it's only gotten worse. And look, we had, let's face facts, we're fifteen years from a road project. So the roads are deteriorating, we're eating away at our base, and when you have a high traffic count, those roads are gonna go down first, and that is one of our highest traffic corners in town. So it's why, it's why it's so important to spend sixty-four thousand dollars on a block, because it is a high traffic count.
So that's my thing, that we getting the quality work that that corner deserves.
Yes, our engineers are designing it. We're not going patch it. We will hire a contractor. Uh, you know, someone will come in, and this is the first of our road program. The fun thing is, by August, September the latest, I've already been in meetings interviewing the banks, looking at getting our best rate. Jason Akers came with his team a week ago. Jeff sat in on it with us. So we're in the process of the first steps of floating that bond in September, August, September, for ten million dollars to start our road program. Because of the wisdom of this council, you let me hire the engineers early. And so our engineers are already working and beginning to ride districts and look at the preliminaries to come back to you with streets probably by July. So, you know, we're taking steps that maybe people don't realize or don't see. We're kind of in our road program. We're beginning to spend money and this is the first public view you have of us taking action. But, uh, you know, we said we were gonna do this. Every one of you that ran or reran or did anything with government all said, you know, everybody's telling us we need to do our roads. I mean, we drive these roads too. We all know. We live in this town. So, uh, this is our first public step toward doing something that's long overdue. Anybody else? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. That's exciting. Alright. Madam Clerk, seventy-eight.
Adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten. Approving the extension of the cooperative endeavor agreements between the City of New Iberia and the New Iberia Museum Foundation.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bruce Art and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on this item? Besides a big thank you, any discussion? Well, look, for twenty years to have them occupy the museum, put all the displays in, run the museum, well, we had the easy part. We do the buildings, we do the show. But for, you know, everyone involved in that museum to help us tell our story, to help us, you know, bring people in, bring tourists, hold them in our downtown, all the things at a museum to educate them, educate our own citizens on our history, uh, it's important and it's ever-expanding. I only look forward to get better and better. Um, and one of the reasons we had to do this amendment is because it's tied to the money we've already gotten. We get a total of three million dollars through a whole lot of people's efforts over the three years. We have one more year to go, but with the money we took, part of it was, you know, you need an agreement that reflects the agreement you made with the state to get the money. So part of what Jeff did a really good job, and he also took the time to consolidate because over twenty years we've had a lot of agreements. So now we have one agreement, which makes it simpler to track, and we turn that over to the state, which is a requirement of the money that we're getting. So it, uh, you know, it's, like I said, it's to me a big thank you, but. Anybody else? Any questions? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, eight A.
Presentation of the October thirty-first, twenty twenty, year-end independent auditor's report, presented by Burton Holder and Brad Holder of the firm Holder, Chompon and Slaven Incorporated.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My dad and I are here tonight to present the October thirty-one, two thousand twenty audit report. You have a ninety-one page report in front of you. For the sake of time, I'm sure no one will object to me not reading the entire report to you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. But I am happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna go ahead and go over some of the general comments in the beginning and then the sewer fund, and my dad's gonna hit kind of the high spots of the government as a whole. But as I said, if you have any questions, go ahead, stop me. So let's get right into it. I'm happy to report that you don't have any internal control or management letter findings. You didn't have any last year. You don't have any again this year. That's a good thing. Um, and the first three pages of this report is the opinion. Again, for the sake of time, I'm not gonna read it to you. You have to take my word for it. But you do have an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best opinion we can give of CPAs, which is what we gave you last year, which is what you're getting again this year. We did, however, have ten verbal comments. We went over these with the mayor and with Kevin during an exit conference last week. Um, we had nine last year. A lot of these are kind of some of the same ones. A couple of them renew. Nothing major enough to be put into the report. All things that we could handle just by saying, hey, you need to do this or do that. And we made good progress during that exit conference regarding those comments. So, without further ado, let's get into the report and let's take a look at page seventy-eight, which is the sewer fund. Page seventy-eight. And on page seventy-eight, you have comparative numbers for both nineteen and twenty. Uh, we'll kind of go through these and hit the high spots again. Like I said earlier, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Looking at the top of the page with operating revenues and charges for services, you can see that the customer revenues did increase from two thousand nineteen to the current year from four point two million to four million, uh, two forty-three. So a slight increase there. Um, the parish government cooperative agreement revenues, this is some money that you get reimbursed from the parish government. That did decrease from a million one seventy down to eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. So your total operating revenues went from five point three million down to a little over, or about five million seventy thousand, about two hundred and ninety-eight, three hundred thousand dollar decrease, mainly because of that parish government appropriation. But when you get to the operating expenses, you can see the cost of the services rendered. Um, those went down by about that same number as the amount you get from parish government. So it's kind of a dollar-for-dollar exchange there, from three point five million down to three point two million. Depreciation expense, virtually the same number, two million one sixty-three last year, two million one eighty-three in the current year. So virtually no change there. And total operating expenses went down from five million seven thirty-six down to five million four sixty-five, or about two hundred and seventy thousand dollar decrease in the expenses. So we had a dip in the revenues, a dip in the expenses, so we did increase our operating loss a little bit year over year. Uh, we had an operating loss last year of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The operating loss this year is three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Again, we had a little bit of a decrease of revenues and the expenses didn't decrease by quite as much. Moving on to the non-operating revenues and expenses, you can see that federal grant revenue is fairly comparable to last year, thirty-eight thousand versus fifty-two thousand. Investment income is down quite a bit from seventy-five thousand almost last year to forty-seven thousand. Again, there's no yield out there. Rates are virtually zero, so it's a good thing if you're borrowing. But as investment, obviously it's bad and you can't get any return on your investment. That's kind of the case here. Um, the interest expense and fiscal charges, you can see those are comparable, two hundred and nine thousand and two sixteen. This is the interest you're paying on the various bonds that you have within this fund. Non-employer pension contributions, very similar, forty-one thousand last year, virtually forty-one thousand here and this year, no change. And then other, because we gotta stop at some point, thirty-seven thousand six hundred last year, down to sixteen thousand. So we saved about twenty thousand dollars there, or, I'm sorry, decrease in revenues, excuse me. And then the total net operating revenues or expenses, and it's expenses in this case because of the large interest expense, was an expense of sixteen thousand eight hundred last year. It's an expense of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred this year. The loss before contributions and transfers was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in nineteen. That loss increased to four hundred and fifty-two thousand in two thousand twenty for some of the reasons we just talked about. You do have a substantial amount of capital contributions. This is pertaining to the sewer project that you have going on. You do have a substantial amount of capital contributions. This is pertaining to the sewer project that you have going on with the Iberia Parish Sewer District. And last year, those contributions amounted to about nine-hundred-thousand dollars. In the current year, they amount to two-point-one million dollars. So when we add those capital contributions, so we just talked about from an operating standpoint, you have a positive change in that position both years. Last year, that change was five-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, and this year, that change is a positive one-point-almost-seven million. So it's kind of a, not necessarily all bad news. Your operations standpoint, not perfect, but however, you do have a lot going on and improving the sewer system, which is fantastic. Any questions about page seventy-eight?
Dude, have we, have we targeted or figured out why the revenue is down from parish government? Is it rooftops, the flow rate, or from the eight-hundred-and-twenty-six?
It's probably both. It's probably both, it's probably both rooftops and flow rate.
Do you think that trend is going to continue on?
Till the economy picks up, yes, I do. Uh, you know, a lot of it is business-related and, uh, things have slowed down. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, but things have slowed down and, and businesses have slowed over the, you know, the, the downturn and COVID didn't help, so that's part of what that issue is.
And it's good to know that we're controlling our expenses, you know, at the same time, so I guess we need to be, you know, vigilant on our expenses that we always are.
We do, and, and this is an area that I, I'm not advocating for that. Please don't quote me on that. But, you know, we'll see some, uh, comparisons later in the evening that show that we're not out of line on what we collect for our sewer use a fee compared to other communities. But this is an area that is costing us money. This is an area that it's our utility, but it's not paying for itself. Uh, and that big expense we have of contribution is because that levee failed, and we're on half with the parish to fix that levee because we own half of that other plant. Is what it is. I mean, it's, uh, it, this is a challenging sector of our, you know, of our budget.
We're not going to make money in the sewer business.
The mayor had a good segue.
Not yet, it is.
If there's no further questions on seventy-eight, it's a good segue into really what I want to talk about next, and you should have some handouts. And the second page of your handout should be. Does everybody have the handouts? And the second page or exhibit one is a four-year comparison for the city of New Iberia. It gives you the customers, the income, the expenses. And, uh, we could take a look at that and then we'll get to something the mayor mentioned earlier about the comparison to some, to some other communities. Looking at the approximate number of, number of customers, we have four years in front of you. You can see you're hovering right around that eleven-thousand-eight-hundred mark. Every year, you may have a little bit of a dip below that. When you look at seventeen, eleven-thousand-eight-eighty-five, and two thousand twenty, eleven-thousand-eight-twenty-seven, virtually no change or very little over the past four years. Moving on to the income, we have a little bit of fluctuation here in that eighteen and nineteen year, but when you compare seventeen and two thousand twenty, the ends of the page, thirty-five, twenty-eight in two thousand seventeen, from an income standpoint, thirty-five, seventy-two in two thousand twenty. So your income in a lot of ways, when you look at it, it kind of went up in nineteen and twenty, or I'm sorry, in eighteen, nineteen, but it's flattened out in two thousand twenty. Similar situation with the expenses, um, thirty-eight, fifty-one this year. You were at thirty-nine, sixty-six in two thousand seventeen, and then that rise I talked about in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And so you can see for an operating income or loss situation, you have losses all four years in front of you. Uh, the good news is it's an operating loss and it's two-seventy-nine this year. It was two-sixty-three last year and two-seventy-nine two years ago, so it's stable. That's, that's a good thing. Um, when you add back this huge amount of depreciation that you guys have, yeah, you're not making any money, so to speak, from an operations standpoint, but we add back depreciation, items that you've purchased and were expensing over time. That last line, it says operating income or loss without depreciation. Another way, another way to look at that is cash generated here. And when you're running about twelve dollars and sixty cents the past three years, you're generating twelve dollars and sixty cents of cash per customer per month. So it's not an all-bad situation. Yeah, you have these operating losses, but you're still generating cash within the sewer fund. So it's, it's worth pointing out. It's kind of a good news, bad news situation. Not more good news than bad news, quite honestly. Any questions about exhibit one? If there's no questions about exhibit one, let's take a look at exhibit two, and this is what the mayor had referenced a little earlier. And what we do in exhibit two is we give you five of the communities around here, Leesville being a little bit a ways away, but still a good comparison. You can see New Iberia number of customers is really, um, it's the second highest on the page. You have City of Lafayette at forty-six thousand, quite a bit bigger. New Iberia, eleven-thousand-eight-hundred, um, and then Broussard, Carron-Crow, Leesville, all around that three-to-four-thousand-dollar market population. And when you take a look at the income, New Iberia falls right in the middle. At thirty-five, seventy-two, Lafayette's the highest at fifty-four, ninety-one. Then you have Carron-Crow at forty-one dollars, and they just did this increase. I'm sure some of you were aware, very recently, because of the improvements they needed to make to their system. They didn't used to be this high three or four years ago. You guys come in at thirty-five, seventy-two, as I said. You take a look at Leesville at twenty-four, fifty-nine, and Broussard just limping along at sixteen, thirty-seven. And then you look at the operating expenses and you can see how in line you really are. Lafayette costs a lot more, but they charge quite a bit more than you. They, they have operating expenses of fifty dollars. Carron-Crow's the most comparable, really, when you look at it from an operating expense standpoint. Y'all are a matter of thirty, thirty-five cents apart at thirty-eight, fifty-one versus thirty-eight, eighty-five. They just charge a little bit more than you guys do for the service. Broussard has operating expenses of forty-four and Leesville down there at thirty-three. And then we get to the operating loss line, and you can see only two of the five entities we're showing here have operating income. Carron-Crow does, as I said, this is a very recent development in the past few years. Lafayette does as well. They've had this operating income for a while. Coming in at two-seventy-nine for an operating loss is really not that bad. When you take a look at it here, Broussard, a, at a loss of twenty-eight dollars is, is atrocious, quite honestly. And Leesville at eight-forty-one is not, not the best either. Um, we do add back the depreciation in all the various, uh, cities, and you get to the bottom line and see, other than Broussard, everybody is generating cash. You guys coming in at twelve-fifty-nine is really not that far behind Lafayette, even though they have such a higher fee at fourteen-ninety-three, or even Carron-Crow at fifteen-eighty-one, twelve-sixty's not a bad number. Um, lot better than losing ten dollars and forty-two cents. And this is cash. This is cash. So, and then again, just to point out for Broussard, they've made progress to get to this point. This, they were quite a bit worse years ago. So it's like the mayor was pointing out. I mean, it, it's, it's good to take a look at this and see, yeah, you have an operating loss, but it's not all bad news. You still are generating some cash, so. Any questions about what I did on seventy-eight or exhibits one or two that we just went over? If there's no questions here, I'm going to turn it over to my father, and he's going to look at the government as a whole and, and take us home. Thank you for your time.
Again, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having us here tonight. And, uh, as Brad indicated, I'm going to go ahead and, and continue on with exhibit number three that you have before you. And as we indicated earlier, rather than look at knotty pages or try and flip you through knotty pages of this report, we tried to bring this exhibit, and this is all of the funds of the city of New Iberia compared to your total budget for two thousand and twenty. And then we have three years of actual numbers, if you look on the far right after that, uh, black barred line here. So the first three columns is just for twenty. It's your budget that you finally adopted and amended, then the actual numbers, uh, per the audit, and then the variance from, from budget. And if everybody remembers, you should be within five percent, put it this way, your expenditures should be no more than five percent higher than what your budget was. Your revenue should be no more than five percent lower. Now, you could be higher, and you could be lower on the expenses, but you should be within that five percent tolerance, if you get what I'm saying. Now, let's look at this on the, uh, the property taxes, on ad valorem taxes. You budgeted to receive fi- four-point-five million. You actually brought in four million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand more than you thought. And you look at last year's, it was four million, five-seventy-three. And again, I would attribute this, Mayor, to just increased activity and, and valuations of the properties, uh, for the, for the reason for the increase in the amount of property taxes being taken in. And if you look at the previous three years, you were hovering around four-and-a-half million to four-point-six million. This year, we're at four million, seven-sixty, which is great. It's a good thing. Sales tax revenues, again, a very positive factor. If you remember at this time with the COVID situation, it was so much uncertainty, and there was predictions, I know in Lafayette, they were predicting twenty-one percent reduction in revenues. Well, I was with them today and we just completed their audit. They're on October year-end as well as you are, and their revenues dropped in sales tax by two-and-a-half percent. Well, I'm happy to report yours, you budgeted seventeen million, one-eighty-five. You actually brought in seventeen million, four-seventy-two, if you look at that. And look at last year's, it was seventeen million, seventy-seven thousand. So you're up two-point-three percent. Uh, as I said, Lafayette's down two-and-a-half. Most of our smaller cities, and I'm going to, you're in the top end of the smaller cities as far as I'm concerned, but all of our clients and the ones that Brad referred to earlier, all clients of ours, every one of those have seen increases in taxes. And what I attributed to is probably because people had to stay home, so they shop more closely at home. Well, hopefully, they've gotten into that mode of, of, of spending and going to continue to spend more at home. And I think that's why the city of Lafayette has seen a reduction is because the, the Youngsvilles, the Broussards, the New Iberias are not shopping in Lafayette, they're shopping at home. So hopefully, that trend will continue. And I think there was a comment maybe made by Ricky earlier that your sales taxes are up dramatically for this past month. Is that correct, Mayor? That's great. Eighteen percent? Wow. That's great. Uh, franchise taxes is the next tax revenue item. You budgeted a million-eight, came in at a million-six, about two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand less than budget, and last year was a million-eight-fifty. Uh, license, again, that's franchises, that, uh, utility operations that are within the city pay a franchise fee, as everyone is aware. Obviously, they must have received less revenue, so they paid you less franchise tax. Hopefully, that will pick up. Licenses and permits is the next item, and that was budgeted at a million-six. It came in at a billion-five, a hundred-and-eighteen thousand below budget. Last year was a million-five-eighty-three. The intergovernmental revenues, which is a lot of grant revenues that are coming in, as well as any state revenues as well. But, uh, seven million, eight-oh-three on the budget came in at seven million, nine-forty-three, and look at the number from last year, three million, two-thirty-seven. And I'm sure everyone is aware with the, uh, new spending by the federal government, you're going to be getting, how many, how many millions are we getting here, Freddie?
Uh, we'll get ten. The state will take a six-percent fee, so we'll end up with nine-point-four. All going into infrastructure.
Right, which is great. I mean, it's, uh, I call it money from heaven, basically, that you didn't expect. But, uh. Uh, charges for services, Brad just went over this, uh, which is the sewer charges. You budgeted four-point-two million, you brought in five-point-one million. Last year was five million, five-twenty. Uh, fines and, and forfeits, budgeted four-hundred thousand, brought in two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. Last year was only forty-three thousand, and the year before that was only two-thousand-nine-thirty-five. Remember, a lot of those earlier years, you had the sheriff's department that was, you were paying to patrol the city, and you were getting very little, uh, uh, if any, fine revenues. Miscellaneous revenues, budgeted two-point-three million, came in at a million, five-fifty-one. Last year was a million, nine-ninety-six. But in total, this, uh, city budgeted to, uh, and this council voted to amend the budget to thirty-nine million, eight-ninety-eight, right at forty million. Look how close you came out, forty million, two-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars. That's three-hundred thousand dollars more than what was anticipated. Look at the second-to-last line item way down at the bottom. That's a variance of point-one-seven percent. You remember when I first started, I said you should be within five. You're at point-one-seven. That's phenomenal. That's, you can't get it any closer than this. Now, on the expenditure side, here, there's, you know, as you can see, most of the items are very comparable, but, uh, the, the administrative expenses, we budgeted four million to spend. We spent only three-point-three million, and, uh, that's seven-hundred thousand to the positive. Public safety, you budgeted to spend eleven million, eight-fifty-three. You spent eleven million, one-fifty-four. Public works, budgeted to spend three-point-four million, only spent two-point-six million. Garbage, which Brad just went over, you budgeted to spend four million, nine-fifty-nine. We spent four million, seven-forty-eight. Uh, culture and recreation, budgeted to spend one million, seventy-seven thousand, spent only eight-ninety-five. Urban redevelopment and housing, budgeted to spend a million, three-ninety-seven, spent a million, four-nineteen. That's the only line item, uh, so far that's slightly above the, the budget item. Utility fund expenses. Now, this was one, I, I don't know, might have been a glitch, but was budgeted at six-and-a-half million. You only spent three-point-two million. You can see last year, you spent three-and-a-half million. So again, uh, plenty of leeway there that, uh, and the depreciation, of course, we budgeted that one exactly, or you budgeted that one exactly the way it came out. Now, under principal retirement on the debt service, budgeted to spend two-point-three ma- three, two million, three-seventy-five, spent two million, four-seventy-three. Last year was about two-point-one million. Interest and fiscal charges on those bonds, budgeted six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, spent six-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, and last year, we spent six-ninety-two. Capital outlay, you budgeted to spend under the capital projects, nine million dollars. We only spent four million dollars. Again, it's an estimate as to how far along these projects get as of October thirty-one. Obviously, they didn't reach the level that was anticipated, so consequently, you didn't spend that much money. So we came out with a phenomenal budget variance of four-point-nine million. Now, this will be redirected or has been redirected into your budget for this year, and you will be spending those monies. But the long and short is, you had anticipated spending, including this capital, of forty-seven million. You only spent right at thirty-seven million, where ten million dollars less than what was anticipated, which is, again, a, a tremendously positive variance of twenty-two percent. So that is, that's great, but again, we didn't spend the capital that we, you anticipated spending.
Back on five million. Of the spending this year.
You're going, that's correct. You're going to spend it this year, and it's already been put in the budget, I'm sure, Freddie. And, um, so the excess of deficiency, very much, let's just go on down to the very last line item. You had anticipated having a deficit of three million, four-eighty-eight. With all these things, again, not spending the capital monies and being very close to the budget, on the revenue side, you ended up with a surplus of six-point-nine million dollars. So again, but again, that's been redirected. A lot of this is capital that was not spent. It's been redirected into the current year. And you can see, if you look at last year, nineteen, we had a surplus of three-point-six million. The year before that, in eighteen, you had a surplus of a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, but the year before that, in seventeen, we had a deficit of one-point-one million. That's not inconsistent for a government. Some years, you're going to spend a lot of capital, like this year, you may be spending, now you're going to be getting a lot in, but you're going to be spending a lot of capital, so it could be a deficit, but you have the surplus to cover it, so. Any questions on this particular page? So very good situation, very close to budget, especially on the revenue side, and under budget on the expenditures, mainly because of a lot of capital not being spent. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, um, let's go on over to the next exhibit. It's exhibit four, but I also, if you would, flip to page sixty-four in the blue book, sixty-four, and then we'll go to exhibit four. We've looked at the operations for the year. You had a, a tremendous surplus because of the lack of spending some of the capital monies, and watching what you're spending on the operations side. We're going to look at page sixty-four, which is a snapshot, or it's a balance sheet. It's called a statement of net position, but it's basically a balance sheet. What assets does this city own? What debts does it have? And what is the remaining amount of what we call net position? And how much of that is restricted, and how much is available to you for future? And how much cushion do you have, so to speak? I'm going to focus on the third column and the fourth column. Third column being the totals for two thousand and twenty, the fourth column being the totals for two thousand and nineteen. Look at your cash and interest-bearing deposits. It was twenty-two-point-six million last year, and it is twenty-seven-point-four million for the current year. Now, that includes some capital monies, but it's, the reason for the increase primarily is because you had a surplus for the year, okay? And so that adds to your cash and your interest-bearing deposits. Your accounts receivable, pretty close. It was six-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand last year. It's five-hundred-and-eighty thousand for the current year. Internal balances offset, the due from other governments, this year, we're showing six-point-four million. Last year was right at four million, so it's up about two million dollars. It's about two million dollars of CARES money that's going to be coming in, or was, was owed to the city as of October. You did receive it after October. So you have it now in your, in your cash. Um, real estate held for sale, that's the same sixty-one thousand. It's insignificant. Uh, prepaid expenses were sixty-six thousand. Big items is your capital assets. You have non-depreciable, which is either construction in progress and/or land, and it's twelve-point-four million. And then your depreciable assets, the book value of all of the assets of the city, including the streets and the infrastructure and the sewage and so on, was seventy-three-point-seven million compared to seventy-six million last year. Total assets of the city of New Iberia went up from a one-hundred-and-eleven million to a hundred-and-twenty-one million. Remember, we had a, a surplus. A lot of it went into cash. Then I'm going to look at your debts. If you look at the liabilities towards the middle of the page going downward, total liabilities of the city, and I'm not going to read them all, but it's sixty-two-point-four million last year, and it's at sixty-five-point-seven million. If you look at the first two items right above those numbers, those subtotals, you see you have other post-employment benefits, nine-point-seven- see you have other post-employment benefits, 9.7 million. What this is, is the estimated future obligations for the current employees of this city for group health insurance. It's actuarially computed, it's forecasted, but you're paying it as you go. But we are required as CPAs to put it on your financial statements. So, are you going to pay this? Yeah, you're going to probably have to pay it over time. The net pension liability is state pension plans, but we're required to put your share of that, which we get from the state pension plan, and says, New Iberia's portion is 22.3 million. Now, yes, you probably will have to pay this, but it's going to be paid over time. But they're requiring us to put it on your financial statements, but it's an obligation that'll be for the future. Just keep those two items in mind. And then I want to look now at the net position. Net position of this city, if I take the assets minus the debts, including these pension obligations and so on, you're at a net position of 62 million this year. We were at 57 million last year. But if you look into this, you have, a lot of this has been reinvested. You have reinvested in capital assets of 59 million this year versus 56 million last year. And you have unrestricted, it's showing a tremendous deficit of 15,624. Everybody sees that number, it's in brackets. So, now, let's shift over to Exhibit number 4. Remember that 15 million? So, it's a deficit, but I'm going to add back that pension obligation, and there's some other factors including that. So, instead of showing it at 22 million, it's a net number of about 17 million. I'm going to add that back. I'm going to add back the 9.7 million of group health insurance. And I'm going to add back the sales tax dedications, because your sales taxes are dedicated, but they're broadly dedicated. You can use those, okay? So, it's available to you. So, your available net position to this city is about $24 million. And you remember, we had 27 million in cash. So, we're liquid, we have it in cash. And I look at my total expenditures. If you remember, we spent 37 million annual expenditures, and that is category number 2. I'm going to add, I'm going to take out of that capital outlay, because that, that's not recurring necessarily. And that leaves you with expenditures on an annual basis of about $33 million in this city. It's about 90,000 a day, 89,978. You're recommended to have at least two months of available reserves. That's about 5.4 million. Well, look at the amount that you have. You have 23.9 million, so we call it an overage amount. You're over that 60-day threshold by a significant amount of money, 18.5 million. And you can see the number of days that are available to you in case we have a problem, a pandemic, a shutdown, that you don't have much, if any, revenues coming in. You could operate this city with what you have for right at nine months. That's phenomenal. That's great. And I can remember, Freddie, I guess before you took over, but before you, when your predecessor was here, we started doing the work, and we were down to probably less than 30 days of availability. So, it's continually progressed upward, and then when Mayor took over, it's continually to progress forward as well. So, that's wonderful. And look at '18, it was down to 145 days, not so long ago, but it's now built up almost double that to 266 days. So, again, you should be commended, continue to do what you're doing, you're operating very efficiently, and you're adding to that surplus. And I know you're here to serve the people, but you have to have money in which to do a better job with, and you're conserving, you're spending it probably very wisely so that you can accumulate more and be able to do more down the road. So, again, very, very commendable here. I'm pleased with what I see, we like the trend, and so on. Questions from anyone? Okay, we have a couple of other items that you may want to look at on Exhibits 5 and 6. And I know, Freddie, you like these because it, it shows that it's cheaper to live here in the city of New Iberia, and most of you have seen this before. What we're taking is some of those same cities that Brad referred to earlier with the sewer comparison, and we show you the population of the relative cities, and what's their sales tax rate. You're at 2.5%. Carron Crow's at 4%. Leesville's at 1.5. Lafayette's at 2. City of Youngsville's at 3.5, and the city of Broussard's at 3.5. Their annual revenues, you can see that they're bringing in, and how much revenues per person, in other words, and again, I realize sales tax, you've got some people that travel here that spend money here, but still and all, this is what it's costing if you lived here for an average. And in the ad valorem tax mileage, and you can see yours is as indicated on the mileage, and the revenue per person, how much is that generating? The very bottom line here, though, if you're living in the city of New Iberia and you're paying property taxes and sales taxes, it's estimated that it would be about $755 a year that you're paying. City of Carron Crow, you're at 1270. Leesville's at 939. City of Lafayette's at 859. Youngsville's at 940. And Broussard, remember, they don't have any property tax there, but their sales tax that they're generating, and again, some of it's paid by, not necessarily by the citizens, but it's averaged out by citizen, $1,177. So, on this page, and Freddie didn't ask us to come up with these to make sure you were the lowest, we've used these in the past, but you historically have always been low. And I know you've advocated that in the past. Hey, stay in New Iberia. It's cheaper to live here. You can maybe work somewhere else, but you can also live here, and it's cheaper to live. So, anyway, just as a food for thought, we're giving you this. The last page is just a comparison of your police expenditures. I know we've looked at this in the past, even when you were contracting with the sheriff's department, but if you look at it, and again, I'm going to just focus on the bottom line, it's the same basic cities that we've been talking about. It's costing you expenditures per person $205 here in the city of New Iberia. In Carron Crow, it's 295. It's costing Leesville 399. Lafayette's at 282. Broussard's at 267. Scott's at 376. Youngsville's at 197. And Onaville, very small, which we've added here, $279. So, again, I think you're doing this in a very economical manner in what you're operating your police department. So, anyway, just giving you food for thought. This is extra stuff, not included in the report, but we thought we'd just point that out. And I want to know if there's any questions? Great. Hearing none, I just want to appreciate, I want to tell you how much we appreciate the business here in New Iberia. It's certainly a pleasure working with Freddie and council and the staff here, and we hope to continue the relationship in the future.
We will. Can't thank you enough. It's a joy to work with you, to this council. We all part of this. This is not a one-man show. I thank you, my department heads, Kevin, who runs our finance department, our staff in finance, you know, everybody. It's a, it's a joint effort between all of us, between all our department heads, between the staff, between the whole team. So, can't thank all of you enough, because we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for your efforts. But thank y'all again. It is a joy to work with y'all, and we will continue this.
Appreciate it, Freddie. And the report has been submitted to Baton Rouge.
Good, thank you.
And also to the federal clearinghouse for the, because when you have federal programs, which you did, like 6.9 million, we have to audit those also, and on a sample basis, then we've got to submit this to the national clearinghouse for the feds so that you can continue to get the federal monies as you have in the past. So, all of that's been taken care of. You should be good to go for the next year. Continue to get some monies, Freddie. Thanks again. We appreciate it.
Continue to try. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now, we move on to councilmen's remarks. Councilman Markout, I'll start on your end.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Public Works, because I've been contacting them so much lately, and they take care of any issue I have, usually within the next day or two. So, I just wanted to give them a quick little shout out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis?
Yeah, Mayor, and councilman, this has been a pleasure for me to be a part of this team, as hear our auditing firm talk about our finances and where we at today. Being a part of this is, it's just a good feeling, you know. I appreciate what you did and what we've did to move this city forward. I also like when they talk about how it's cheap to live here, but it's cheap to live here, but we ain't cheap.
Ah, there you go.
You know, so come visit us, shop with us, and hang out with us.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard? You got it written on an envelope.
It's good to see teamwork. Thank you, Mr. Gossasen, for showing up. We look forward to modernization of our election. I'm going to use it till I kill it. But no, it's going to be nice when it's all fixed. Let's fix the rest of the fooling. May 12, 3:00 p.m., at the Gazelleble Downtown, our First Lady Kathleen Babino Blanco, we're putting a plaque up, if y'all can show up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Ricky, council.
So, it's, you know, it's just really a joy to come to a meeting and be able to talk about so many progressive things, and know that your city's growing on great leadership. But, you know, I'll make one comment, is that you've got to have your house in order to grow a community. And it's obvious tonight that our house is in order, in great shape, and the future's bright. So, let's continue the teamwork.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leder?
I want to invite everybody. Gardu Court and Gardu Temple are going to be giving away free hot dogs, chips, and with a drink, and it's going to be on Saturday, May the 15th, from 11 o'clock until all of them are gone. So, come on out. And it's going to take place at the Masonic Lodge on a corner of Anne and Orleans Street. So, come on out and get your free hot dog, chips, and a drink on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed?
I just wanted to remind the community about the meeting we're going to have at the Masonic Hall on May 13 at 5:30 p.m. We're going to talk about how to revitalize the neighborhood. We're going to talk about the city's master plan. We're going to talk about how to buy a home, repairing your home if you're a senior, the grants are available. So, we have a full agenda, and I hope that we have a lot of people that come out and learn about these programs. I'd also like to remind everyone that you can still get a brick for your veteran in your family. I saw the article in the paper the other day, and I just want people to know that it's still available. I'm getting one for my brother. He's a veteran, he's deceased, and I'm, you know, so excited. I hope the other people will buy some and support this endeavor. And then the last thing I want to do is thank the Acadia Workforce Development Group. A few, I guess about a month ago, you guys probably remember, they came out and they held this event for the children to hire anybody from 16 to 24 years old in the Weston Park. They hired about 60 kids, and I would say most of those kids are currently working. And so, that's exciting to know that we have a lot of the children or have something, or young adults, not children, young adults, that are going to have something to do this summer, and that they're going to be learning a trade, and hopefully, it'll be something to build toward their future.
Thank you. Councilman Swier?
Thank you. I have a couple. On a light note, I don't think I've ever sat in a council meeting, in a city council meeting, and had a, our parish chairman praised so many times, so appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. The second thing I have to say, the Cook-Off Live Oaks, Best of Live Oaks is coming up on June 12. Spoke to Heather earlier. I think we have eight so far signed up for the Cook-Off. So, I want to, we're trying to, our goal is, I think, 10, 11, so we were almost there about a month ago. So, if anyone wants to join in on the fun and put your bragging rights up, please do. And that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next meeting is May 18. I always remind you to participate in the MS4 Stormwater Survey. It's part of the requirements for our decree with no money sent down from the state. We still have adjudicated properties for sale at civicsource.com. And Memorial Day, we will be dedicating the new veterans memorial. The main body of bricks are down, everything else is finished. On Thursday, we will hang the plaques. So, that's coming. Mr. Councilman Broussard talked about the Kathleen Blanco plaque, which I think is just really important and really a good thing for our community. That's coming. So, we've got a lot of things going on. Other than that, motion to adjourn? There you go.